Our invocation this morning is going to be from Commissioner Barker Acock.
Mr. Mayor, please. Heavenly Father, we're here today to vote on a very important item for Fremont. We see this mission will be a big growth for the area and the citizens and the children of Fremont. And we bless the town and bless the people who live there because they're on a new adventure and we will be there with them. We thank the school board for all their efforts. We thank Daniels and Daniels. And I especially thank Wayne County's Board here for all our efforts in getting this project off the road. And especially, I would like to put out a prayer for Commissioner Ray Mayo for all his efforts in getting this started. The day that he walked in my office and we discussed Fremont School. And thank you again, Lord, for all the blessings that you give this country and continue to help us with the problems that we are faced every day. Thank you and amen.
Amen. I suppose I was negligent. I should have announced the fact that we do have three commissioners or two commissioners that are participating remotely. And so with that in mind, all votes will be roll call votes. And on the line now, I think we have Commissioner Wayne Acock. Commissioner Acock, are you there?
Yes.
Great, great, great to have you this morning. And then we've got Commissioner Freeman Hartison on WebEx. Is that correct, Commissioner Hartison?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, I'm here.
All right, great. Well, you're on the agenda to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So with that in mind, we're going to let you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Everyone stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible and just as for all.
Great job.
Thank you.
On our agenda today, we've got two items. One is a discussion and possible action on a guaranteed maximum price for the new Fremont Elementary School as recommended by the Wayne County Board of Education and the Wayne County Public Schools. Secondly, we have a discussion of possible action on the purchase of five acres, five plus acres for the new Fremont Elementary School. So the first topic is going to be a discussion, possible action on the maximum guaranteed price. And we're going to turn that over to our county manager, Craig Hanica.
Thank you, Chairman, and good morning, everybody. One of the things in talking with the chairman that we thought would be an interesting thing to do is kind of go back and look at the history and how we got here to this point with this cost and the commitment that the county has made. Again, if you remember, we originally got approval of a needs-based lottery grant funding. This was done in 2020 for $15 million with a local match of $5 million. But part of that was the county was going to have to give up its lottery funding of about $1.2 million for a five-year period. So if you look at all this, and at that time, we were looking at a budget of around $20 million for Fremont Elementary because we were kind of comparing it to what we did with Meadow Lane. Meadow Lane, a couple of years earlier, was about at $18 million. So at that time, we said $20 million was a good budget number to look at. So if you look at the loss of lottery funds, if you look at our commitment for the match, over that five-year timeframe, we had an $11 million commitment to this project. Again, in November 2021, the school board came to us and said, hey, this project, we think is going to be a little bit more than the $20 million. We did not want to be hand-struck or hand-tied with respect to the project that they felt like with the costs were rising at the time and the different things that were going on, they asked for a maximum price of $23 million. So the board did agree to that, and that time, we committed $14 million for that project of county dollars. The good thing that happened in January 2022 was the school system and the county reapplied for lottery funding for additional funding, and we did receive that. And I do appreciate the work of our legislature. I appreciate the work of our school board, also this board as well. But at that point in April 2022, we received an additional $9 million for a total grant amount of $24 million, and that included a $1.25 million match from the county. So our match got lowered, but also the positive thing about that was we're now still receiving our lottery dollars that we were foregoing at the time. So we're getting those $1.2 million back that we were giving up for that five-year period. And then in April 2022, the school board solicited bids for construction manager at risk, chose Daniels and Daniels, final construction drawings were approved, and then bids were opened in May. But what kind of happened in May was this kind of happened all over the country is we've seen incredible cost escalations. So I do want to applaud Daniels and Daniels, I want to applaud this board and also the school board of really going back in and delving into the numbers and saying, hey, what can we do to cut this price? Because I think originally, it came in around $38 million. And so we went back in and, again, a lot of work that was done to see what we could do to bring that guaranteed maximum price down. So but working with the school system and Daniels and Daniels, we now have a guaranteed maximum price for construction recommended at $35,705,418 and 16 cents. And this was recommended and approved by the Board of Education yesterday, and we do have a joint resolution that we would need to pass in concurrence with that. But again, if you look at it in the big picture, we are still basically committing $14 million in county funding for this school. Even though we got the additional $9 million, that really has gone to inflation and everything else that we're seeing right now with respect to construction costs. So that's where we're at. And again, the school board yesterday, I think it was unanimous that they approved the resolution with their recommendation for the guaranteed maximum price with Daniels and Daniels, again, of the $35 million.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Okay, we've got a motion. If we could, if I could get, Craig, if I could get you to read the resolution.
I'd be glad to. Joint resolution between the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education accepting the $35,705,419 guaranteed maximum price for the new Fremont Elementary School construction project. Whereas the Wayne County Board of Education and the Wayne County Board of Commissioners have agreed to construct a new Fremont Elementary School and whereas Wayne County has received $24 million in state needs-based funding and whereas Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education have identified the construction of a new Fremont Elementary School as a priority and whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education are committed to work together to ensure the entirety of funding committed to this project is used efficiently for a new Fremont Elementary School and not for other capital needs and whereas the Wayne County Board of Education has entered into a contract with Daniels and Daniels as construction manager at risk to construct the new Fremont Elementary School and whereas the contract in Article Three requires an agreement on a guaranteed maximum price, that's GMP, which must be accepted within 30 days, calendar days, after being presented to the Wayne County Board of Education in order for school construction to begin and whereas Daniels and Daniels has presented a GMP in the amount of $35,705,418 and 16 cents and whereas both parties agree it is prudent to use a needs-based grant funding from the state of North Carolina together with borrowed funds to fund the Fremont Elementary School. Now, be it therefore resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and the Wayne County Board of Education. Number one, that the parties agree to accept the GMP for a total of $35,705,418 and 16 cents. Number two, any funds applied for by the Wayne County Board of Education or the Wayne County Board of Commissioners to fund this project will be used exclusively for the construction of Fremont Elementary School. Number three, that the boards will work together on the Fremont Elementary School project to ensure efficient use of these funds. Number four, that should the GMP exceed $35,705,418 and 16 cents, GMP, the boards will work to identify additional funding sources to complete the project. Number five, the appreciation is given to all parties who aided in obtaining funding for this much-needed project, which will greatly benefit future generations of Wayne County children. Hathen adopted this the 15th day of June 2022.
Okay, thank you for reading that. We have a motion on the floor. Is there any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Acock, go ahead.
Go ahead, he can hear you.
I cannot hear who made this motion.
That would be Commissioner Freeman Hartison, sir.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Any other comments?
Yes, playground equipment. I don't see a price or anything.
That has been removed at this time. I think the expectation is to work locally with the PTA and some local fundraising to do playground equipment. We talked about trying to move some of the playground equipment from the existing school, but I think the recommendation is it's kind of brittle and it would kind of not be a really good thing to do to move old equipment over to a new school. But there is a plan to try to work with the school system and the local community to raise money for that.
I'm just saying, if it's not raised or whatever, are we going to buy playground equipment?
That would be a decision of the board at the time if it comes up. Yes, sir.
Well, if I could clarify a little bit, in the actual loan, we do have an allocation of $250,000. We do have an allocation of $250,000. $250,000 for playground equipment, which was the original allocation that they had. The difficulty here, if the playground equipment is included in the guaranteed maximum price, we're having to pay the fees associated with that $250,000. So it costs more than $250,000. So we pulled it out and decided that we would, in fact, add it back in as a allowance.
The chairman is correct. I did forget that, what we did on that. I do apologize. So there is $250,000 that was set aside, that the school system will bid out, that's kind of their budget that they're looking at, and then once we borrow the money for this, that will be included in the bid, or included in the line.
These allowance.
My apologies.
But we are encouraging Fremont to go out and actually try to do some capital raising on the playground equipment.
What was the price difference in the fees?
I beg your pardon?
Fees, what were the fees for the playground equipment?
I think it was 4%.
Yeah, 4% or 2%.
It would be 4% plus there was a 1%, I think, bonding, so that was 5, and then there were some other fees that were associated with it. So it did add with no value added. We just decided to pull it out, and the schools will actually be putting the bids out for it.
And there are not going to be fees and stuff associated when they put the bid out? Because you're talking about, I mean, max, you might be seeing at 5%, $12,000, you know? It just seems like it's going to end up still being at probably that same amount, if not more, pulling it out and then subbing it out to someone else. So I just don't see where saving any money, or, you know, it just seems like we're, we, once again, I said it before, it seems like we're doing stuff to try to make this price look better, but it's not, I don't know if it's going to be any benefit later on down the road, still end up having to spend more money, or this price is going to exceed that $35 million. So, but it's, I mean, I know the school is needed, everything out here is needed, playground equipment and all, I just hope everything goes successful without having to, you know, put a lot of change orders and stuff in, and they end up being right back at that $40 million. But thank you for that information.
Okay, any other comments?
I got a question. On the, it's got the NCDOT upgrades, is that like turn lanes and things like that? But it's got zero, so what?
It is, but my understanding, they've already reached out to NCDOT, and they are basically going to handle that, NCDOT is, is that correct?
They told us it would not be necessary.
The turn lane would not be necessary?
They said that the entrance and exit of the school was far enough away from other places that are accessing that road, that the turn lane was not necessary in their eyes, they would not recommend doing it.
So you're not accessing from 222 then?
I'm interested, we have a rear entrance.
So we're turning straight off of 222 with no turn lane into the school? Okay.
We were surprised by that, because on other projects we put in, they have had us to put in turn lanes. We were assured by DOT that it would not be necessary, but this project...
And you got that in writing?
Yes, sir, they gave us a report.
Okay.
So everyone in here, they should come up to the microphone.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, yes.
He can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, I'm in agreement. I don't care what DOT has told them for the turn lane, if they don't get it in right, I cannot vote for the project, because there will be a turn lane there. I mean, my God, y'all think about this, but that much risk involved, there's no way that school can be built without a turn lane. I mean, go to Norwayne or Eastern Wayne or any other school, and it does not have a turn lane now, if you're older school, and you'll see what the problem is. They cannot build that school without a turn lane. I don't care what DOT says, if you haven't got it in right, you're in trouble.
And my understanding is, we do have the report in writing, is that correct? If you would step up here and give us some clarification on that.
Thank you.
So before we could look at the site and civil work, we had to submit it to NCDOT, who did a cursory review of that and the traffic pattern, as well as the car stacking ability that we have on campus, which is several hundred, if not 1,000 feet more of car stacking ability. So NCDOT, in their report, recommended not moving forward with the turn lane, which is why that allowance could potentially be reduced. So I'm happy to provide to the commission board a copy of their report, if you would so like to have it.
Okay. Well...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
I think we're speaking to the microphone, I cannot hear part of it.
All right, if you would repeat that.
Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Acock. So in the process of going through the civil site diagrams of the school, and having it submitted to NCDOT for their review, to see if we needed any turn lanes, any adjustments or moving of our driveways, and they did make a suggestion on our driveways to make sure the distance, they are apart a certain distance, but NCDOT did not recommend that we needed a turn lane, and I'm happy to provide a copy of the report to the commission board, if they so would like to have it. And that is one of the reasons in the cost, right, looking at the GMP, that we were able to reduce that allowance to help with our guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yes, he can hear you, go ahead.
Okay, make sure you've got a copy of that done, but I'll file with the county.
All right, he's submitting that to us today.
Yes, sir, I will get it and supply it to the county.
Okay, good, good. And generally, if you have that report, I would assume that if they later determined a turn lane is required, they are going to have to put it in.
It's on them.
It's on them. So, and I think that may be what they were doing, and that is trying to help the county out by saying that we're not going to require it, but I agree with you totally, Commissioner Acock, that at some point, a turn lane is going to have to be installed, but it's going to be on NCDOT.
Okay, I'm good with that, just long as we've got the document all filed.
Thank you so much. Any other comments? All right, if there are no other comments, we're going to have a roll call vote on this?
Yes, sir, we will.
Okay, so if you would call the roll.
All right, I will begin with Mr. Acock. Mr. Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman-Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Commissioner Bevan Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Happily yes.
Chairman Joe Dottery, how do you vote?
Absolute yes.
Commissioner Chris Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman, it is unanimous.
Thank you so much. So we're, at this point, well, first of all, before we go any further, I think Commissioner Barbara Acock would have a few comments.
Yes, I would, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to welcome the Fremont Board here, thank you for coming today for this very important day for Fremont. I remember the first time I heard about the new Fremont school, Commissioner Ray Mayo walked in my office one day and said, you know, we would like to see a school built in Fremont. I says, well, you know, Fremont Stars is very popular in Fremont. I said, I don't know how well that'd go over, and we did get some pushback. But he said, you know, the school's going to be built, whether it's in Fremont or somewhere else. Well, I knew that we wanted it in Fremont, we wanted to maintain our community school, because how many community schools do you know of now, that maybe the children can possibly walk to school and be very close to their school? But the area is growing so fast, the school is needed for Fremont, and I hope the ones that did have the pushback on this, when this new school comes available and school starts, that they can see Commissioner Ray Mayo's vision when he walked in my office. And also the vision I had too, once I started listening to him talk about it. So Commissioner Mayo, I wish he could be here to see it, because it's going to be a big event for Fremont, and you're going to see undue growth coming around you, and that's going to be a very positive thing for the town of Fremont. And I'm happy to have been a part of it, and I'm happy to continually be a part of it. And I hope the board is also happy about the Fremont school also, and thank y'all so much for being here today, it means so much. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, if I could make some comments on this, several years ago, I had asked that the Board of Commissioners work a little bit closer with the Board of Education on new construction. And in the wisdom of our legislature, they have created a Board of Education whose responsibility is to actually oversee and build new schools. On the other side of the coin, they stated, okay, commissioners, you're going to pay for it. Well, that's a little bit of a problem there, because you're asking somebody to pay for you to go and build something. And so what we did here in Wayne County is we put together a working group on these projects, where from the beginning, from the very beginning of a project, we have commissioners and Board of Education working together to try to find ways to have common agreement on the front end and during the process. And that worked very well until the price came. It does work well, but when the price of this particular school came, I mean, it really floored everyone. It floored everyone. It was almost double what we expected. So we went, we rolled our sleeves up, and we went to work, and we were able to find ways to reduce this by about $2 million. But let's face it, we're in a very peculiar economy right now, and the cost of construction has skyrocketed. On top of that, yesterday, we had the great news, our interest rate was raised by 3/4 of a percent, and they have plans for that to be increasing at 3/4 of a percent every month until December, bringing the benchmark up to 5%. That's the benchmark. That's just what the banks barry between themselves. So with that in mind, we met with our financial advisors yesterday afternoon, and we have got this on fast track to try to get this loan for this project ASAP. The sooner we get it, the sooner we can lock in the interest rates. We do know if we wait, it's going to cost us more. So we are working well with the school board, and the school board is working well with us. And there has been, as former Commissioner John Bell used to say, intense fellowship, but we have got the job done. So I commend the school board, I commend the board, our commissioner board, of taking this project and moving forward with it. So, great job. Our next item, does anybody else have any comments? All right, hearing no more comments, sir.
One of the board members.
Okay, we do it. Yes, good morning, commissioners, and everyone assembled in the room. There's one thing I wanted to say that I think really contributed to this school. I said this before in one meeting, and I just want to echo it again, and this is towards Ms. Barbara Acock. Thank you for your doggoneness and not letting this go, because Fremont really, really needs a new school.
Yes.
And some of the things that we've talked about and the vision that you've had, we can really see this beginning to take light, just like you said. So thank you all. I appreciate the time and the effort that you all have put towards this, and I passed the hat during some of our meetings, and so far, we collected about $25 to help in the effort, so if you need that, let me know.
Well, keep passing the hat. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
All right, our next item on the agenda was discussion and possible action on the purchase of five-plus acres for the new Fremont Elementary School. Commissioner, I mean, county manager, honey, go.
Thank you. As boards aware, there's an additional five acres on the school tract at Fremont that we originally did not purchase, but in going back and re-looking at the site design and looking at where we need to put the retention pod, it really is a necessary addition to be added back to the site of the elementary school. In front of you is a copy of the offer to purchase and the sales contract. The funds are, I believe, are coming directly from the school sales tax, so that they're not asking for any additional funding from the county at this point to purchases, but according to general statutes, we have to give our blessing for that purchase. And Andrew has, if you do so, prove it, Andrew has a motion that he would like for you to approve.
Any motion that you add, I would just make it contingent on the school board conveying that property to the county for two reasons. One, you will save on the sales tax during construction, and two, you can use that for collateral when you go out to borrow. So whoever makes the motion, I just ask you make it contingent on the school board conveying the property to the county after closing.
The total property?
Well, we already, we already have the previous, how many acres was that? The previous, approximately 16 acres, we already own that right now, or it's already been conveyed to the county. So we would just be asking that this 5.2 acres also be conveyed to the county.
How much was that per acre? I think that's 12.5. No, I'm talking about the 16 acres.
Do you remember?
How much was the 16 acres, the original price? How much was?
20.8 purchase price was $312.
So it's 20, 20 point, say it again.
20.8 is the original tract.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that we add the contingency of the property that we're about to purchase to the current agreement that we have. Is that correct?
That it be conveyed to the county following closing?
Be conveyed to the county.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Acock.
Yes, just, you know, we were told previously that the school board would be able to apply the funds for this, we just wanted to make sure that you got that documented, because, you know, we were already spending a whole lot of money, and I assure you that they had the money to pay for this property. I know it's not being paid to the county because of the sales tax, and I'll, you know, here again, to touch your eyes and cross your teeth.
Yep, we do have that agreement, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Hardison?
Yes, sir. Was this property available when the school board purchased the original acreage?
Yes.
And so, why wasn't it purchased then?
Hold on just a moment, we're going to get an answer for you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Freeman, happy to answer your question. So when we look at the original property, it was a 30-acre tract. The family, the Evans family, kept five acres of that, and then when 795 came through several years ago, the farm was divided by 795, and the 5.2-acre tract that we're interested today, we had an offer to purchase when we did the original tract, but there was some concern at the time of the cost per acre, so the commission board approved just the 20.8 acres, and we terminated our offer to purchase on the 5.2. The reason we had two offers to purchase back then was the property was in two different deeded entities or names. The 20.8 acres was in Ms. Evans' name, one of their mother who has passed away, and then the 5.2 was in Evans' family farm. So we had two offers to purchase, and again, when we came to the commission board and we had that discussion, the commission approved the purchase of the 20.8, but not the 20.8. approved the purchase of the twenty-point-eight, but not the five-point-two at that time, so we terminated that agreement. From working with the working group that has been put together, and as Mr. Dottery has said, has worked really, really good, when we looked at the site plan of the school, and since we're building a school that has impervial surfaces and we have runoff, we have to collect that runoff before it leaves the property. So a, about an acre in size retention pond area was put into the civil site plan. So when we looked at that property, the school laid out on twenty-point-eight acres, and how close the retention pond area would be to the school, and the loss of the potential playground, ball fields, community use of the property, the discussion then began to center around, can we come back to the family, because we now see a need to acquire the, the five-point-two in an effort to, to move the retention area further away from, from our school and our, and our children. So the working group, the facilities committee was, was in agreement with that, and then our school board, in their wisdom, gave me the ability to work with the family to negotiate that. And the current price that the family has agreed to is actually less than the original offer to purchase per acre that we had about two years ago now, I believe, with that. Hope that answers your question.
Thank you very much, sir. Yes, it did.
Yes, sir.
Is there any more discussion or comments? Okay, we have a motion on the floor that will be a roll call vote. You'll call the roll.
Vice Chairman Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman-Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Bevan Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Happily yes.
Chairman Joe Dottery, how do you vote?
Yes, I always like it when we save money.
Commissioner Chris Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
It is unanimous, sir.
Okay, that is all that we have on our agenda. Is there any comments from any commissioners? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Mr. Chairman, can we get a picture of the?